Okay, well, let's. Are we able to get started like a minute early? Okay. Oh, it does? All right, it's seven o'clock. Let's go ahead and get started. Well, welcome, everybody. We've got a full house tonight. I want to remind everybody that this meeting is being recorded. First order of business, has everyone had an opportunity to review the agenda as written? Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda as written? Second?
Aye.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Oh, there are no meeting minutes on the agenda, is that correct? Okay. Perfect, okay, thank you. Okay, so there are lots of people in the audience tonight. Do I have anybody here for public comment? Okay. Mister?
Good evening, committee members. My name is Brandon Lasowski. I'm a resident here of SCAPUs. I also serve on our city council. This night, I come to you as a citizen and just wanting to express my desire for the Parks Committee to first focus on a particular goal that I think will help our city move in the right direction in regards to the completion of the Parks Master Plan. And I'm aware that this is already something that has been taking place. And I know that city staff are supportive of getting the master plan done. But as a priority for this group, I would highly recommend focusing your time and energy on that particular item in regards to the completion, as it will be a pivotal guiding light for our community on how we intend to move our parks system and parks development forward. I would also add that the completion of the Parks Master Plan will provide the city with a document that will access a variety of additional grant dollars that will help fund some of the amenity improvements and site development improvements that our city and our citizens have identified in the expansion and growth of our park systems. I don't want to take too much of your time, but I just wanted also to say I appreciate each and every one of you for taking the time to serve our community. Sometimes these are thankless jobs and positions that we do for the betterment of our community, for the citizens, and hopefully for future generations. And so with that, I ask that you please bring your best to each of these meetings and allow for open and honest dialogue to take place, but also do it in a respectful manner that allows for everyone to feel as though that they can be a contributor. And with that, I just say thank you. And I yield the rest of my time.
Yo. Joel?
Joel Haugen, fellow SCAPUJian. Just a quick note that for food for thought related to the Run With Neil that we concluded last weekend before was a great event, 380, I believe Paul might correct me, with 386 registrations, I believe. And it was something that I think that would be desirable for the Park and Rec Committee to partner with, Run With Neil crew for next year's event, and maybe we can get it over 500. And it's just a neat, neat activity. It was a lot of fun for those that participated. And so I hope you'll think about that.
I think that will be something to consider as the time nears.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, do I have any additional comment tonight? Okay, great. Let's go ahead and get started. So as we know, last meeting was a rough one. There was just a lot of frustrations that were shared with Isaac. And as a result of that, I've been fortunate enough to have a lot of very fruitful conversations after that. And there has been so many opportunities, I think, for us to be able to move forward. And not only that, just I've connecting with Counselor Grayson and with Dave Suker and with Isaac. We've really been able to piece together how and why we've been facing so many different challenges. And so I'm starting to see like a really clear picture of where some of our challenges were and how we can move forward in a way that's really going to be helpful and positive for our committee. So that's going to be mostly the focus of tonight. There's going to be some opportunities for kind of like some questions, but the whole, the hope tonight is that it's really a positive meeting where we can really clear things out, set the goals going forward, and we just stay moving forward so that we can get to the master plan. So with that being said, I want to highlight some of the, some of the, some of the first challenges that we came across. So for to get everybody up to speed, at a city council meeting, Dave Suker shared some of his goals or some of his plans for parks coming up. And we were not aware of what was going to be happening in those parks. And so we felt like it was a missed opportunity for connection, for us to be included and in his, in his park planning. I've since learned that simply Dave and the Parks and Rec were just really not aware of each other's goals for the year. And so Dave and I discussed some ideas on how to move going forward. And that will be that I meet with Dave on a more regular basis so that I can understand better his challenges with any, with some of the, you know, some of the things that we've suggested with, with implementation of things where, you know, his thoughts on, hey, I'm considering doing this. I would love to present this to the committee, or just so we can have a little bit more of a heads up. And it is not always being relied on from staff to be able to communicate that to us. So that was, that was bridge number one that I feel like would be a really good opportunity for us. We also talked about, just in general, like if he was able to share our goals with our committee and council, that we can be creating more collaboration with our goals so that when, when we have our goals, like everybody is aware. And he can share with us his goals so that we can, so we can build our goals around that to be helpful and fruitful with what we do over the course of the year. At this point, what I have learned is that we are very siloed with our goals. And there's been some miscommunications along the way on how council received our goals and with how Dave received our goals. And so we have all been kind of doing three things separately, which has been led to a lot of frustration for us because we did not know, none of us knew that we were doing things separately. So this is another opportunity for us to work together and create a very cohesive plan going forward for our fiscal year goals. I'm going to stop here. Do we have any questions? Okay.
I guess I'll throw one out there. So, you know, taking part in the 50-year planning committee and seeing how the planning commission functions, like Lori as the city staff person responsible for those areas shows up to those meetings, is it possible to get Dave to participate similarly here?
And if I can just interject really quick, Dave did. When we formed this committee years ago, he was at every meeting and gave updates, and then that just fell away. And I think that's an integral part to this situation being what it is today.
So I think one of the challenges is that when, and I think this goes to me. I think people have lots and lots of questions for Dave, and he feels like it cuts away from the agenda if, when he is there, because it starts to get into the weeds with him there. And that can fall on me for me helping everybody stay on topic better. Because that, that was part of the challenge is it was, we would get far enough off the agenda. And so he didn't feel like him being here was very fruitful.
I just want to, that was not my experience. I mean, Dave, my understanding, and maybe Mike was there as well. My understanding is that Dave would come in, he would go through what he was working on, and basically give a report.
Yeah.
I don't recall people going into the weeds or going down some rambling path, so I'm confused.
I feel like that was his experience, and it might have been one or two meetings where he's like, you know, I was not sure that what I'm doing is, is as helpful as possible. And so I'll, I think that, I think that he can, we can give him that feedback for sure, that it is helpful for him to be here.
Because he has staff people as well. So if he's unable to make the meeting, having somebody here that actually works in that department is really important to this group.
Yeah. I know that frequently Isaac and Huell gave, gave updates. But again, this, I think it would have been helpful for Dave to be there for those updates, but that was just his feedback. So I think, like I said, I'll take, I'll take that and just in terms of how I can help keep everybody focused so that anybody, everybody here makes, feels like their time is, is utilized and that their, their time, it's helpful to the conversation.
Your mic isn't on, I don't think.
Hear me now? I was going to say, I'm sorry I wasn't able to be at the last meeting, fortunately, or maybe unfortunately, in Lake Tahoe. So anyway, it sounded like it was some frustration, and I get it. I really don't think that was Dave's intention, but I think it does highlight that there's a little bit of a disconnect. And I think that typically the way it should work is that in the December, Isaac, whoever the rep is for the city comes in and asks for our, our goals. We submit them to the council, council adopts them, and whatever the council adopts is what we work on. And there are priorities and, and other things along the way. I mean, and we have our annual commissions meeting to report on the progress and really provide. You know, I think this purpose is pretty well spelled out. Basically, we give feedback and try to help promote parks. Hopefully, we get back on that focus. I do think it was a misstep on Dave's part. I don't think it was city malice at all. He was just... Anyway, I think we get past that.
I think at the end of the day, I would agree. I like after, after I've had conversations with everybody, I don't feel like there was any malice on anyone's part. Like I think, like, it's very clear that there was just these opportunities that were missed. And it's, and it's, you know, it's, it's challenging because the committee members change, the counselors change, and so rules change, but then we're not necessarily up to speed. And so over time, that there can be disconnects. So now this is an opportunity to move forward.
You know, and honestly, if you look at Dave's, look at his portfolio, my God, he's got so many projects.
He, he does.
But you know, getting back to what AJ said, I think it'd be nice if he checked in every quarter anyway.
I think, I think so. And between Dave being able to check more, if he's able, and then me being able to check in with him, or the chair being able to check in with him more frequently, and me being able to communicate some of those things to this entire committee, I think, I think it's going to just make things run more smoothly.
Well, I think one recommendation that would go a long way is that if Dave is not able to attend the meeting, that we get some kind of written report for him that is submitted to the commit, to the group every month, so that when we do meet, we've got a clear understanding of what's going on.
I, I don't know that they're always, that, so he has a lot of things on his plate outside of parks. So I'm not sure that, I mean, some of Huell and Isaac's updates have been that they are seeding the grass, that they bought a new lawnmower. So I don't know, I don't know if that would always be fruitful.
Well, I think things related to parks, I think would be very fruitful. And then we're not in the weeds ourselves, wondering what's going on.
Yeah. I think, I think that's something that we can definitely discuss and see if there's something that Dave can come back with that says like quarterly goals or quarterly plans, or I don't know if my, we can, we can see what, what's possible and how often he is actually making changes within the parks. Um, okay, so moving forward with that.
I have a question. I don't know if you saw my hand raised, but.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Hi, Jeanette Santiago. So I, being the new liaison for this group, I've just wanted to ask questions. For example, I know that in the emails we receive, we receive the, the bylaws and the, there was some committee notes of committee goals back in January of 2021. Not sure if, who developed those goals. Was it the council for this, this committee? Or was it the committee to present to council? Or was it a, a collaboration?
So when we, oh, sorry. So when we see our goals, we create goals to adopt in early, in the early year, January, February. We create five goals for our committee, and then we create five goals to send to council. So that, but there's also another opportunity would be is that council going forward will also be sending us goals for us to be working on. Is that correct?
So just to clarify, you're saying that you're extending five of your goals to council to be approved? And but, and then additionally, you guys are working as a committee on five addition, or separate goals within yourselves and without the council's knowledge or approval?
It was not our knowledge that the council was not seeing our goals.
But, okay, so just, I mean, clarification here. I, that's, I guess that's why we're meeting. So why would not, why you only provide five instead of all?
So I, I think that, so we have five goals that we are saying we are going to work on as a committee. And then five goals, not to submit to council, but we would, we would hope that council to be working on for our committee. But to my knowledge, council was supposed to be seeing all of them. We were not keeping anything from council with those goals.
Right. So that's kind of, I guess that's what my, my, the short time that I'm there, it, I have, I have been part of many other committees, like some of you guys as well. And this is the first time I'm kind of seeing the roles of committees proposing their own goals to council. I thought it was, my understanding is that council proposed goals to the committee. And they're recommend, and the committee does do, you know, do recommendations. And it says in the bylaws and everything, it says recommendations. And but there is some of things like that, I think there needs to be more defined. For example, in, in, in the bylaws, it says advise, support. I'm thinking, well, I think there needs to be more, you know, when you mean support, does it mean participate in, in the development of the master plan? And, and there's some of the things in here that I, I think that as the committee with the council should really look and saying, to make everything clear and have open communication is really define what council or what the committee is willing to do as far as their commitment as what is quote unquote support? What is facilitate, things like that? Because I think if all these words can get a little mushy and the, and so the council, what I understand is the council provides goals for committees, but then it, it seems like this group has it a little bit different. So maybe that's what I'm seeing in my observation of the miscommunication.
As to my knowledge, we, so from my, as, since I have been chair, like we have been directed by the city to complete our goals as we have been doing them. So I think this is, uh, definitely, I, so I have not been on any other committees. So I have not been aware that other committees made goals this way. This is just how we have done it. So I think that if that needs to change, this is where this is an opportunity. Paul?
Oh, yeah. I just have a question. First of all, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So with regards to Dave showing up or not showing up, I guess on a higher level, does Dave want to use us, use us as a resource? I guess that's the question. Like, so for instance, I hear how, how busy Dave is. As you guys know, with the Grabhorn Park Ad Hoc Committee, we spent so many hours on outreach with the citizens, you know? What amenities do you want to see, et cetera, et cetera? We got so much feedback from citizens, and it was great. So, you know, now let's say Dave has an idea. I've got a, you know, I've got a line on a zip line, for instance. I mean, we're, we were just talking to the citizens, right? And we, so we already have like all this data that shows what, what the citizens have asked for or needed. I think we're as a group willing to go, hey, Dave, we'll go out to the citizens, like we'll go to the playgrounds on Saturdays, and we'll get feedback from citizens to see if they like this idea. You know, because I think, I see us as a extension of the citizens, right? You know, Dave can't go out by himself and ask everybody if do they want a zip line. But we could go, we're willing to, I, I think this committee, this committee is willing to do things like that.
Yeah, and so.
But only if they, Dave wants it to happen, I guess, like, you know, what I'm, what I'm saying is.
Yes.
Hey, Paul, I'm going to cut you off. She, excuse me, this is Counselor President Grayson. Kara Hines is the chair. So when she chooses to interject or try and redirect you, I would hope that you would respect her doing that.
I'm sorry, I have a delay here.
I'm going to put it back to Kara. Thank you.
Thank you. So one, so when Dave and I sat and talked, we, we had that discussion of like, hey, we would love to be utilized for these things. And so there were some things that he was really excited about, how, how we could be utilized. And so that boils back down to understanding what his goals are. Under council, understanding what everybody, like us all coming together and kind of saying like, hey, how can we make this next year like work for us? How can we, how can we hit these tasks? How can council be aware of what we're working on? What is Dave working on? How can we be an asset here? And so one of the examples I gave was, we were talking about actually like an east side dog park. And I said, you know, we were just kind of talking about like, oh, this space or this space. And I said, we would love to be like the boots on the ground for figuring out, and this was just a theoretical discussion, where an east side dog park would be. And he was excited to have us utilized. So again, like I don't think that there's any, any malice here. I think that there are opportunities, and that is definitely, that is definitely one of them.
And I'm just going to say again that, you know, if you look at this purpose, I think it's really very well done and very well defined. Our role is to advise and make recommendations to the city council on park and recreation policies and issues. A, we support community and city council efforts to maintain, develop, and promote parks and recreation opportunities. Vice of the city council on park and recreation matters to support the development of a master plan. Be the city's ambassadors in developing and promoting parks, recreation activities, and three or four other things that I think are really appropriate. But I think that, I think we really know what our purpose is, our mission. I just think that we're a little bit out of a line, to be honest with you. And I don't think that it really matters what Dave wants. It really matters what the city council wants. And let me just kind of finish if I could. So that's why the process was set up, that we recommended to city council, here's, here's what we think are the goals for the city. And with all due respect, sometimes there's some crazy ideas that show up. You know, somebody might want to put a zip line from here, from the top of the hill all the way to Chatham Landing. And once we do the goal process, it's a polite way to say, thank you for your ideas, but we only have so much time and so much staff. These are our priorities. And then once those priorities are identified, then it's Dave's job, the city manager's job to implement those, come up with work plans, action plans, this is what we're doing. And then through that, they advise us. Last year, they said, hey, we think we need to update the park plan. And I honestly think that that's going to take a tremendous amount of, of our effort and energy. So I think we're going to be okay. We had a hiccup.
Yeah.
We look forward.
I agree. Thank you. And as a reminder, let me, when you have your hand raised, let me call on you. And I, but I would agree. I think that this is a hiccup. And I think that it's really an opportunity to fine tune how we, how we get this information. And then, so we're all just a cohesive unit. Jeanette?
So kind of following up on what you're saying, Kara, I think it's how it's communicated. Maybe that's what it is. I said, you said you were going to be communicating with Dave, which is great, as talking to the committee. As, as the liaison, I think that you and I can also be, have that communication of what you would want me to communicate to the council. And, but it seems that, I think it's if, I'm just assuming, you know, just Dave coming. I mean, I know Dave's name keeps coming up, but just like Mike says, it's not about Dave, what Dave wants. He's a staff member. And, and so council and this with staff, with staff, come up with a budget on how things should be done or the order to be done, for whatever reason, because everything costs money, right? So they see the overall picture of what is for best for the, for the city. So I just think that maybe it's, if it's not the clarification of what the role is, maybe it's just the way how or who communicates the information.
Yes.
That's my observation.
I think that's a, I think that is a huge breakdown. So one of my thoughts for, for us and you, Jeanette specifically, would be maybe at the end of our meetings, just be able to say like, these are the top things that we'd like you to communicate to council next time. We can all agree as a, as a committee and just have these points so that, that you are a solid, a solid point. And we all agree to like what is, what is being communicated and where our biggest challenges are, et cetera. So I think, I think that is also an opportunity.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. One more thing before I move on to Isaac. There's a couple of different things before I pass it over to Isaac. So questions and agendas, we'll, any questions? And any updated agenda items, they will need to go to me. I have been looking for clarification because that was our second challenge, was how do we communicate via email? So I got answers, and I have been working on this over the past week, but it's been, I wasn't quite sure how to communicate it to you. So as an example, somebody, there was a group chain regarding tonight's meeting. And somebody responded like, hey, can I be added to the next agenda? And so I cannot reply all to that. I have to reply individually to the person. So that way it's not a group meeting. So I, I might just reply all and say like, hey, everyone, I address this question. But if you don't, if, if, if for whatever reason I don't, I am replying individually to that person. I can also share info, information over the course of the month outside, but nobody can reply. If you have individual questions, you can reply to me just one-on-one. And then I can put that on the agenda or figure out a way to address it. But just so we are all clear, we can communicate, but it just has to be very strategic in how we do it so that we don't violate public law. But that does mean we can share information. We just cannot create a group discussion based off of that shared information. So any questions about that before I move on? Mike, go ahead. Okay, we can, yeah, we can do that towards the end. It's, yes, we are going to have, we are meeting with MIG next month. So it will likely be full, but we can discuss. Go ahead.
We can't hear you, Mike.
I was gonna say that I know that the city staff just got, and I think, sent out to us, but it'd be nice to have a presentation from where we're prepared, did the reports for the Grabhorn property that talked about the wetlands and the road. It'd be kind of nice to know where that is and have a discussion about what that means. And see if from this committee, there's any recommendations we might want to move forward to the council. The reason for my thinking, it might be, first of all, I think it'd be a fruitful discussion. And second of all, I really don't want us to lose sight of the fact that best funding source that's available is, is an April deadline. It might be too late to do anything, but I'm not so sure that's the case. I think it's worth a discussion.
Let's bring, let's table that and move that towards the end of the meeting. Thank you. Okay. Those are, those are the main points that I had. So I'm gonna hand it over to Isaac.
So I think there's been some misunderstanding about what my role is in this committee. By the bylaws, my role is a recording. I'm supposed to record the notes in the minutes. I distribute the agenda that's created. That is made by the chair. Those are built by me based on what you ask for here about. Have specific projects from council or staff has questions of them. I am here also as a communicator from the city. Historically, there's been one, sometimes two staff members assigned to this committee. Most of the time, one person comes. And what we do is we bring back questions to answers you've had. We'll bring new things that are coming if we can. Sometimes things come up that we're not able to bring to every committee every time. We used to function where questions would come up during committee or in between committee. We would bring answers to those, bring them if there's more questions, kind of cycle through that. And try to clearly communicate about staff levels, about what's happening in the city. And recently, over the last six months, that role has changed. As staff, we've been very on the spot. Things that are not always in our ability to answer. Frankly, a lot of questions we've been hearing have been questions that are really council questions. They're policy questions. Those aren't questions staff can answer. And I want to apologize for what seems like maybe stonewalling or an unwillingness to answer. And that's not at all the case. Reality is what we say, which is we can't answer that, right? You don't have that answer or you're gonna have to ask council. And those are the true honest answers to those questions. That's not our place. Our place is executors, you know? We work with council for council ultimately and for the public. And the way that it works is council sets policy, we execute it. There's a lot of things we can't answer to. That, that's not our role. So moving forward, I will do what I've always done. I will bring answers to your questions the best I can. I'll answer you truthfully. We'll bring you information you ask for. I will take the minutes and the notes and the agenda and respond emails about, you know, meeting questions or that I've heard you forwarding on your questions and concerns. But I will also continue to be faithful to my duty to the public, which is to not answer policy questions and create policy. That is not my role. Those things do get communicated up. Whether I say I can't answer that or not, I do talk with Alex. Those questions do go to council. It's not my place and it would be wrong. Anybody have any questions for me as staff? Now, happy to answer clarifications on meeting law, eating forum, et cetera. All that.
Thank you, Isaac.
So I, I do have another question. So, and maybe I can direct this to Mr. Sykes. So my understanding is that the city of Scampus is a, is run by a city manager. And then, and then city council are elected, but they're not assigned roles. Like they're not running the police and all of that. So maybe if we could get some more clarification on that, because it sounds like ultimately the city manager makes those decisions, or am I incorrect?
Go ahead, Mike.
We can't hear Mike. Oh, there you go.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Can you hear me now, Jeanette? Okay, I'll speak loud and clear. Well, basically you have a charter that basically stipulates who your council, who your mayor is term. You know, you have to be elected. It also spells out the roles of the council and also the city manager. And of course, the city manager is hired by the city council. And their job is to implement the policies, goals established by the city and to perform all the day-to-day stuff. And that's really their role. The councilors and mayor are the ones that lead, lead the city and establish those policies, as, as, as he said. And really what his job is to do is to implement them and kind of hack as a liaison with Jeanette, with, with the council, what we're doing and questions we have. I think it's pretty, honestly, I think this is pretty well spelled out. You know, honestly, there's been a lot in, you know, Isaac's fairly new and there's been some turnover and change. And you know, anytime you have that, it takes a little bit of time to get your, you know, what do they call it? Storming, norming, forming, or something like that. But I think we got good people all the way around and we had hiccup. I think, I think we're gonna find. Does that answer your question today?
Thank you. Jeanette, go ahead.
No, I didn't have any question, but I did want to clear, I was just, I couldn't hear Mike when he was, I thought he was talking. So just a little bit of what Isaac brought up, you know, I will, I am the, will be, or I am the liaison, but I'm also not council. So I'm, so I can't, will, because it seems like, oh, that would be for council to answer. I'm not the entire council when I, when I'm here, you know, present as a liaison. And so, but I will take your information and everything that you guys, Kara, you want me to take to the council. I can take that to, to them. Also, from what my role, just since we're talking about it, is to also not be an advocate for the committee or give directions to the committee or influence you as a committee, any, either way. So just to clarify that to everyone.
Thank you.
If you have any questions, let me know, too.
Okay. Was there anything that you wanted to otherwise address with the committee?
You talking to me?
Yes.
Oh. Not that, no, that's just it. Basically, my observation, I already had said my observation has been, since I've been in this committee.
Okay.
I already showed that.
What are your thoughts about, are you, are you in support of us like giving you specific bullet points to communicate to the council? Do you feel like that will be helpful for your role?
That would be very helpful, yes.
Perfect.
And it, and it does, it would help that it's, you were talking about emails going back to, they were going through staff. With those, so if your committee members have questions to staff, just to clarify, all those emails would be going, going, or questions would be going to you, Kara? And then you will talk, email to staff or to council?
That is correct. I will, yes. The, and any questions will be going to me and then I will work to get them to the appropriate person. Please also be patient with, so that it, questions are gonna take, are gonna take a little bit of time from this point. Generally, I answer emails immediately. I'm gonna work to space out my communications so that I am having my committee life balance in order. So please, please be patient. We will work to, to get those answers to you. And also just as a reminder that we are such a phenomenal group because we are so passionate about what we do. These, these folks are also running an entire city. So that also takes some time because they will have a lot of tasks on their plate in any given day. And I mean, Hughle and Isaac, I mean, the amount of times that they have stopped to have a meeting with me to answer my questions. I mean, it's, it's amazing, but obviously that's not sustainable. So I do want them to make sure that they have their autonomy in their day, to not feel like they're constantly need to be answering parks and rec questions. Because I mean, in reality, I mean, each, each of you may feel like you're only sending me one or two questions, but each of you is sending me one or two questions. So that is getting fielded a lot. That it, that's a lot over that, a lot of information that I'm getting, a lot of information that the city is getting. And they do their best to get back. But I think, I think that is a process that we can continue to fine tune as well.
So a quick question.
Yeah.
So like any instance where the report was sent out, I think it was the Arborist report. So it's city document, public information.
Yes.
I had a question about a missing appendix.
Yes.
Reference to some drawings. Is that not appropriate to go back to staff?
It should come to me.
So it's a city document and it's public record?
The pressure relief valve, so basically it's, if you send the question to Kara, you can CC the staff. But the reason to run everything to Kara is to make sure that, at instance where a public meeting via email can happen is reduced. So when you send the email to Kara, Kara's role is to take that and then reply and then let you know or whoever else might have questions know, hey, I have addressed this with city staff. They will bring it back. Meeting, please don't respond to this. So it's just to make sure that like, he's in the loop, what's happening with the committee. You and her are both aware of what's going to be coming back in terms of questions potentially. And then also to make sure that that nexus where potentiality for a public meeting happens. That's all. So you can still communicate. You can send it to her, CC me, or me, CC her, as long as we're all in the loop. And it's her to respond to the whole committee, CC them and say, hey, I've received this question. If anybody else has this, it's been addressed, staff will.
Go ahead, Mike.
So maybe it'd be a good idea at the end of our meeting, we ask, is there any items that anyone would like to see on the next agenda? So that it gives Isaac an opportunity to kind of prepare or, you know, if it's reasonable, bring them. For instance, it'd have been really useful to have a little bit of an overview of that studies and figure out what we want to do with them.
Yes. I agree. I, I agree. There, there has been a lot of action. Not only have we had public committee, staff going on with Dave, or public meeting laws, learning more about Dave, learning more about our role with the council. We've had Grabhorn, master plan. So I, I mean, just in signage. And so just to put into context, like, I mean, there have, we've probably overviewed like six or seven, and run for Neil, six or seven topics since the last meeting. So I, I, yes. It would have, but it's, it, there's a lot of information. And so I agree. I think if we, at the end of each meeting, not only do we share with Jeanette, like, hey, these are the bullet points that we want to communicate to council. These are the things we'd like to talk about next meeting. I think that would be a really good way to streamline things and also make sure that everybody's getting, getting input. It is challenging because over the course, again, over the course of the month, I will get seven different topics that we could, that we could potentially talk about that are important to everybody here. And we can't necessarily discuss what's important to everybody here outside of the meeting. So yes, I agree. And so let's, let's just start doing that going forward so that we can all have clarity and input. Go ahead, Mike.
And maybe on that agenda, we could have additions to the agenda so that if there's something really critical that you or anyone else wants to raise, if it's-
I can, I can update the agenda up to a week before.
The same day of?
I, we cannot.
I've been doing this business for 40 years and I would agree.
I would ask-
Go ahead, Kim.
Why would there be a motion to approve the agenda if we can't amend the agenda?
The purpose of the agenda is to inform the public and be transparent. So the purpose of the agenda is so that people online can see what's happening with their government, their representatives. We change agendas during meetings. They're not adequately informed and they can't protest. So we were advised by our legal counsel that we need to have the agendas out beforehand and not change them to ensure that the public can come to a meeting and know what's gonna happen. Choose to not come to a meeting and not be concerned that's something that might be important discussed. That's, that's all. And it, it might have changed, that's completely possible. But currently, we're just operating under what our legal counsel told us we need to do. The approval of the agenda is there as, like, meeting vagueness. I mean, I'll be honest. It's why sometimes things need to come off, but things are never, ever added. Typically, they'll be moved to public comment even, or not public comment, but council comments. Like at council meetings, they're not added, but things have been removed. I don't know, I don't recall a time when something's been added to an agenda the day of or the night of.
We definitely have in the past, but that is the newest information. At this point, like I, I know that this has been like a lengthy discussion point for us. I can't change it. So go ahead, Mike.
You know, I, honestly, I, the organization I've ever been, sometimes you have stuff, you just gotta talk about it. Like, interested in coming to the meeting or watch it, they're all taped. It's not like you're hiding something. You know what, it's really not an important issue to me. So if you, if you don't want to add anything, it's okay. But I, I'm just saying, I don't think it's that big.
Well, I think that if we, if we are all speaking at the end of the meeting and chiming into what goes in next, I mean, there aren't a ton of things that come up like immediately that day of that we need to add. So if we have it a week before. But then also like, again, like there are lots of important things that we could have discussed at today's meeting, but there's only so much time. And so we also have to like prioritize and stay on schedule and not lose focus of our goals. Go ahead, Kim.
Well, and I guess if there's just a way that we can kind of pull the group to maybe gauge priority of topics, because I think we've been asking for some information on Grabhorn for probably four months. So I would say that would be like top, you know, rather than saying like, here's six issues, we'll take on these three. I think there are some that are really rising to the top.
Yes. I would say had we not had the challenges that we had like at last meeting, it absolutely would have been the top. But since master plan is coming up, that was the main focus of tonight's meeting, was making sure that everybody had, was on the same page going forward. So I completely agree. And I think that that should be a topic for our next meeting.
Well, and perhaps if there's no time to get to it in the meetings, if there's just, I mean, is it possible to distribute information between meetings?
We have. We don't have anything more on Grabhorn. You have everything that we have. In terms of the Arborist report, in terms of the wetland studies, that's where we're at. We just haven't, as Kara said, we haven't had time to come to you and talk with you. That was something you asked for, that was on the list and on the initial agenda for this meeting time. Things changed and that agenda got moved. It's, we've been here for 47 minutes and we're still going on about how we need to, we want to move forward.
Yeah.
We, we will bring that information. It's still on that list of things.
Yes.
We do try to bring everything. I mean, we've had two-hour meetings. To make sure we get to all of those items.
Okay. You ready? Okay.
So as Kara mentioned, this group has just outwardly and internally really struggled in the recent time. I think that you're feeling it internally, people are seeing it from the outside. And Kara decided that in order to move forward with the biggest project coming up of the master plan, that some of these disconnects need to be rerouted and find a new plan moving forward. So we've had conversations and moving forward, Kara understands that she is the point of contact for the city. That does not mean that as citizens, of course, you can ask questions. But when it comes to agenda items or seeking information for the larger group based upon what you guys have agreed to work on, Kara is the one fielding those questions. She's reaching out to staff. She's meeting and cross-checking with Dave because he does run the Parks Department. Kara sets the agenda. So she listens to what you ask her to be on the agenda. And if it's not on there, it's because Kara found that it wasn't, either there wasn't time or it wasn't an appropriate topic. So as, as your chair, she is the one that manages the agenda. So that's why we find it important that if there are topics you want on the agenda, that you agree as a group to make that happen, not over email. In, in this group, before you leave, what you want to work on next time. And then she can make sure that's on the agenda. In in this group before you leave, what you want to work on next time, and then she can make sure that's on the agenda. I think we can all underst- um. Agree that there is a big disconnect between what council goals are, what your goals are, um, and what Public Works is working on. So in your packet, um. I don't even know what page it is, but there's a document, it says to Ska- Scapoose City Council, and it's from the Scapoose Parks and Recreation Committee. And it's dated January twentieth, twenty twenty two, and these are the recommendations that you sat down with as a committee. That um, you thought were important for us as council members to discuss during our council retreat and goal setting time. We um, do that in February, so you gave it to us an ample amount of time. We also have these in front of us during that goal setting session in February. Leave Isaac sharing the document. Your recommendations were these five things. So then what council does is during that goal setting session, we look at these five things and we decide if they are important enough. Or necessary in the moment, or um, you know, based upon all the things. Which one of these should go into council's list of goals for the year? That list of goals is what the staff then executes. So. Number one, create budget for a Parks Master Plan. As a council, we thought that was a really important goal. So that's exactly what council asked of staff to do, and they did it. And now you're supposed to be meeting with MIG, um, unfortunately, that continues to be pushed out, um, but hopefully after this meeting, the work can can start. So when you send us these, that's what we do, we go line by line by line. As you know, some of these do not make it passed with a majority of council and they don't make the goal list for staff to work on, and they don't get worked on for that year. We only have so many staff members and so much money, and we need them to focus on. On the goals that we give them. So as, you know, we present them as 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 counselors too, we've got, you know, pet projects or exciting things. And it might, you know, we pitch it and the rest of our counselors don't agree on it, it doesn't make the list. That just means that the time and energy and the resources of staff will not be spent on that 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 year. So then on the next page, I see um, Scapoose Parks and Rec Committee Notes on Committee Goals, January seventh, twenty twenty one. So this is obviously from a completely different time, but this is quite lengthy, there's. Almost double the bullet points with subpoints. This is in a detail that isn't known to council. We don't know that you want or have these these goals. Some of them maybe pertain to the goals that we have created or adopted in our in our um. In our goal setting session. So I am very empathetic to every person on this committee, you're the most passionate group of people that um, advise the city. And I completely understand that you go in your own time and you do all this research and you find out all this information, or you get really excited about something. And then you feel like, well, it falls on deaf ears, nobody's making it happen. I completely agree why that would be frustrating. But just, just to reiterate. It was not adopted by council to either create lines or create a new court for pickleball. So if those discussions continue to happen in this group, I can see why that would be frustrating that there's still not a pickleball court in. In Scapoose, right? Because you're spending your energy trying to research and. But that's not something that we have set for staff to work on this year.
Did, oh, sorry, um, yep. I am not, did we get an update based off of the things within our goals that you guys were not able to work on this year?
So I don't know how it comes back to you in terms of council adopted these goals, these are the goals that are included, these are the goals that are not. I don't, I don't know how that comes back to you.
Once the goals are approved, we do bring them back.
You do.
And we provide them in a packet, so here are the goals for the year.
Right.
And and during that discussion, you make sure to note that sometimes the goals that are in there aren't assigned to staff or they aren't assigned to this committee or.
Okay.
Some of these, some of the goals, like, like Megan was saying, are big, they're really big, they're high level, and so there's a lot that goes in these. Getting Parks Master Plan means a lot of different things, a different.
Yeah.
But sometimes they're appropriate to bring, sometimes they're not, sometimes they're things that they can help with, sometimes they're not, it just depends on items and. As we bring back the list of things so that you can see what council has.
Okay.
We can do a red line if you prefer this year.
I think that would be helpful, cause I don't recall like saying like, oh, council wouldn't be able to work on this goal. I mean, I, it's very possible that we got it and that was a, a long time ago. Oh, okay, uh, go ahead, Jeanette.
Um, I can say in the future, I think as a liaison, I can bring that back.
Perfect.
If that I'd be a way for me to communicate back to the committee.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Mike.
I was just going to say it'd be really nice, maybe at the next meeting to review what the goals are the council set. And um, secondly, to have an update of where we are, that's really would be valuable to know, or how are we doing and.
Go ahead.
In December, we're going to be talking about new goals, I would expect.
Yes, yeah.
I was actually going to say just that, which is we are moving into goal setting again. That's going to complicate the process with the Parks Master Plan, but if that that would make sense, if we typically, when we do that, we do bring back the goals. On scheduling, we might be able to start that next meeting.
Okay.
So just a question, so would we be able to do that by email or talking to each other before the meeting so that we're not? I mean, I'm really concerned about the master plan and also really concerned about the grant for the Grabhorn project.
So JJ, uh, restate your question, please, would we be able to do what by email?
So, so would we be able to just basically send an email stating what we think the goals are and and go that way? So that we're not wasting time.
Focusing on that.
Yep.
Go ahead, Megan.
What you could do is individually send your thoughts to Cara, she could compile a list. And then she could either send that list to you, but you cannot reply all to it, you can tell her what you think.
And and we've done that in the past, um, we've done it a couple of different ways, but we have done that in the past, and that's where we got the very lengthy one. So what um, what we can do is is um, work to streamline it. But if we have everyone's base goals, then it'd be much easier to streamline.
We can, we can compile that, we've done that. For for council to help send in thoughts about stuff, and we as staff take that, make a full document for them to review, because it does help.
Yeah. Go ahead, Megan.
So then on um, on another page, there's a whole list of bullet points and you guys have taken the time to address amenities or wishes at each of these. Recreational sites. So this was another thing that Cara and I had talked about, again, a point of frustration. Um, where it's just a communication where this is maybe something that's dropped on on council's desk. Like, hey, the the, this is something that Parks talked about, okay, I have no idea because. That was never on our goal list to talk about, um, you know, X, Y, and Z at each of these things or adding um, signage. I know that Casey Garrett has made multiple appearances here and talking about the need for cooperation with the city and financial support. That isn't a decision that gets made by this this group. If there is financial, you know, back, that that is not something for your group to work on. And I just think you have so much energy and are such a valuable resource that if we can make it so that. These are our five goals, this is what, you know, council is committed to, or, you know, this is what we think is important. That is what sets your agenda, that's the work that you're doing, we, you know, month in and month out. But because there's all these side projects happening amongst committee members and then the frustrations of, well, this isn't getting anywhere. It's not going to get anywhere. And I also think that from the council perspective, I know Cara is going to work on that and and Jeanette is as well. We have no idea what is happening in this group unless you watch the meetings later. But all the work that you're putting in, I I I do agree is not really going anywhere. Because it doesn't always follow the goals that council has set in place. So moving forward, it would look like Cara coming to council and either giving a brief comment about what we're doing or sending us an email. Or you giving directives to Jeanette to share every month. You know, hey, you know, Parks is still working on goal number two, this is where they've gotten in the last month, this is where they're moving forward. You know, there might be potential need for a budget line item for that, stay posted, so when you make the budget, this might be something that you can consider.
Yeah, um, I would agree, and these, these came from our our smaller subgroup goals and then went to Dave. But as as I had mentioned, like, Dave had already been working on some of this, but didn't know we were doing this. And so these are just real opportunities of like, okay, so um, so we have been putting this work in. And it's, it's not that it didn't necessarily want, you know, people didn't want to help us or we're being dismissive, it was, it was more that. Some of our goals were getting to council, some of them weren't, um, and so we were doing the work that that was on our goals. But now I know that council wasn't even aware that we had our own goals. So um, we will also get more directed from council on how they would like us to focus on their goals next year, which I think will also be very helpful. And create a lot more uh cohesiveness going forward. I would like to discuss the agenda real fast, do you have anything else that you'd like to add?
It's eight o'clock.
Yes.
Is there anything in this group where someone can make a motion to continue the meeting past eight o'clock?
There is.
Can.
I can't make that motion, sorry.
Do we have a motion to continue the meeting past eight?
Move.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Um, okay, um.
You have more that you'd like to add? I just want to make sure that um. Moving forward, that you as well are respected as a chair. And I think that you've gone over multiple times with this committee, the team agreements and the bylaws. And while they might seem clear to some people, they maybe aren't followed by all of them. And so one of the goals um, that is a city council goal that is not on your list, um. There's several, um, but might be worth looking at, there's individual council member conduct agreements. And um, it's in the packet here, uh, this might be worth some time and space um, as you goal set in the future, what you expect from each other in this meeting. Um, and how you conduct yourselves, and hopefully that will make your job as a chair um, a little more smooth.
Yeah, um, uh, yeah, I think, I think going forward, I think that would be, I think that would be helpful. It has definitely, um, uh, sometimes these meetings do weigh on me a bit, and not only that, like I said, um. Still working on that committee life balance because uh, there is a lot that's brought to my attention and I want to make sure I give each individual time. But that can still, like, I, this is not my day job, uh, and then I've got some kids too. So um, yeah, I think, I think going forward, I would love to see these committee spaces as a a place that people are excited to be. That um, is uh, that is positive. And um, I don't think that we've been able to have that for several months now. And so I think that going forward, that should really be our ideal. Is recognizing that everybody in this space is here because they are. They really love this city, you know, like, we're passionate about this city and um, and the parks. And we really do have um, a lot of very similar goals. And we just have to figure out ways to where we can communicate that in kind. In a kind manner, in a productive manner. So yeah, I think that would definitely be a goal for me going forward, that we have that kind of space. Jeanette, go ahead.
I'd just like to agree with Counselor Grayson, as far as this group, I did, I, it is very passionate and very dedicated group. I, you know, I do agree with that, um, and I would hate to uh, for, it's, we're all volunteer, right? And if we're going to volunteer and we want to be a pleasant environment that we're volunteering for. I do want to uh, kind of address the fact that I'm not sure how many council members. I'm sorry, not council members, committee members are part of this committee, just to clarify. Because uh, there would be, you would, you guys would be losing two, right, very soon.
That is correct.
We currently have six members when everybody's here. If all of the candidates that are currently on the bucket for election get elected or. Stay and do not drop out, this committee will drop to a membership of four. Uh, we have had um, openings for the last seven or eight months. We do put those out on Facebook and Instagram regularly. Next door, um, we ad- advertise in our newsletter and we have had no applications for the Parks Committee in that time. So, um.
Kim, go ahead.
Yeah, no, I've I've been reached out to by a number of citizens that have submitted their applications and I've heard nothing back from.
I've gotten nothing. That I know of, sometimes those go to the city report, we'll check with her, but as far as I know, I haven't, personally haven't received it.
Good. Jeanette, go ahead.
Sorry, I forgot to raise down my hand, but I. Yeah, so I forgot my other trade, that's okay, but that's, that was my concern, like, how many, so there's six committee members and then you'll be losing uh, two, so that'll be four, right? So I think the maximum is nine members. Is that correct? I believe so. I think I saw that somewhere, but my, my other thought was, we also want to make sure that it's a committee. That we find as passionate uh, individual members as mu- is the other members that are leaving. And so um, and of course, we want it to be a pleasant environment for everyone, so I think that's, it'll be a win-win.
Kim, go ahead.
And I, I will kind of speak to the, I guess, tone and tenor of the last meeting, it, you know, I think it reflected the frustration that all of us had.
Yeah.
And and the frustration, thank you for all of your time and hard work, getting to the bottom of this, talking to Dave, talking to other staff members, Counselor Grayson, thank you. To realize, I mean, the source of the frustration was, was real because we were wasting our time.
Yeah.
I mean, we've, we've wasted our time from January to now.
Yes.
Effectively. And I guess, um, you know, the, the list that we did create, this was created directly out of. Agenda items that were identified on the agenda, and so I guess what I would also ask is if there are items on the agenda. That you think council thinks are not appropriate, misdirected, not, like, please don't approve the agenda. Is what I would say, like, we need, we need perhaps some more oversight, or I'm not sure what the agenda approval process is, like, once you finalize it. But, you know, this, this wasn't a side project necessarily, this was on our agenda.
And and part of our overall goals, so now that, now that we, I was unaware of that as well. So um, I am the one who approves the agenda, and so those were, those were some facts that I learned. I mean, I believe that it um, uh, yeah, that was, that was kind of a shock to us that, that it did seem as if we were. Creating agenda items when we're like, oh no, we're following, we're following these.
Your goals.
Our goals, yes, um, yes. Yes.
So to go back to the bylaws.
Yes.
You will advise and make recommendations to the actual, the city council, not, not to Dave, it's to us. So people are coming before us as a body, as a group, giving it to us.
Yes.
Support, uh, you know, community and city efforts, um. I mean, one of your biggest things coming up is the master plan.
Right.
Um. To respond to additional matters relating to Parks and Recreation as requested by the city. So I, as you mentioned, there's work happening in in vacuums.
Yes.
Separately, so no, nobody has known what this group is working on, and that's why it's not getting anywhere.
Yeah, so I think this is a.
Yes, so thank you for taking the steps to find a way to correct that, and if we can get back on path, I am convinced that, yes, we can kind of get that energy.
Yes.
Direction.
I think so, I think so.
I just make a point here, I want to say that like, feel that the, the relationship between staff is all particularly. Cool, and this committee have been. Last eight months or so, but I do want you to know that our passion for the Parks Master Plan has always been genuine. He is staff use those to direct us, those are like core guiding documents. That's how we know, year to year, staff to staff, when I'm not here and the next person's sitting here, where we're going. Those are critical, and we really truly have always been behind you, supporting you to do that, and that's why we've been trying to. Make sure that you're ready for that, to really. Make sure that you're ready for that, to really embrace that and help you embrace that as well. Terms of going forward, the way I look at it is that is probably going to be and should be a giant catalyst for next 10 years. Really what happens.
Thank you, Isaac. Mike, do you have something?
I was just going to say that. I, I wasn't aware there was three different set of goals. And so I think this has been real helpful to kind of identify that, hey, we're, we're all not going together and we really need to, you know. I, I've only been on this committee, what, three or four months? And it's been a short, short time, but I recognize a little bit of tension and, and. No, I, I didn't sign up to be on this committee because didn't have anything else to do on a Thursday night. It was because there was. You know, I'm passionate about parks. When I was here, we started some great stuff and I really wanted to be part of a team that. Get some stuff done. Good news, we got some really exciting projects. We got a good staff and. And you know, I'll, sometimes I think I talk too much, but I, I understand the process you guys are going through because they basically helped create it. So. I think going forward. If we can get aligned with the council and their goals. And if there's something we want to do that's not on the list, we can go to the council, hey, this is, this is a good idea. You know, I think there's just so many exciting, fun things that we could be part of. For instance, the, the adventure in the park had been nice to been a little bit more engaged than that than we were. I mean, we are Park and Rec, so you know, there's, there's a great opportunity.
Go ahead, JJ.
Oh, just a quick note. Movies in the Park, just a positive note, was phenomenal. We had hundreds of people show up. I think we're close to 500 for the final event. And, you know, it was free and, and developed a great relationship with the police department. I'm now working with the police chief. He's wanting to bring in a canine officer. So we're in discussion about that. And as it gets further down the road, finding out ways that Parks can engage in that as well. So we're planning on doing it again next year and I'll be working on a lot of grants. Thank you.
Thank you, JJ. Okay. It is eight 10. I would imagine that people do want to get home tonight. So I think this was a productive meeting. Isaac, what is for MIG, meeting with MIG next month? How, like, what is the layout of that going to look like?
I mean, what are they going to want to accomplish?
Right, correct.
We have some serious catch up to do. We haven't identified stakeholders, which is the basis of everything. Part of, I mean, that's frankly why, why you serve as the tack is we need to have voices in the room. So I believe that they're going to want to do stakeholder analysis with you, figure out who those folks are, get a list of that going. That's what we had planned for the first meeting. I don't know if they have anything else that they want to cover in that meeting. Hopefully we have time to get to some other things. I know goals were mentioned. I know there's some outstanding questions from this group. About Grabhorn and a few other items that haven't been addressed yet.
Okay.
I think as we discussed tonight, there's only so much that you can put on an agenda. So it is appropriate that if this committee and its members have questions or information that they want, they send it to Cara and say, I'm seeking information. I would, I think it's important that the group talk about X, Y, and Z. You know, I've seen the emails. And, you know, the information that is shared is the same information that, you know, oh, there's a new Arborist report or there's a new, and it gets sent, it gets sent to you or, you know, whatever, the whole group. So it's not like things are being withheld until your meeting time. But there is information, if you're not replying all and having a discussion about it, that can be given to you in the meantime. So if there's important things that as a whole, this group needs to know and be on the same page. It's not one committee member saying, I want this information, I want that information. I think information needs to be spread, you know, equally amongst you. We have that council goal as well. What one councillor knows, all of us need to know. And so I, maximizing your connection with your committee members and Isaac as a staff member. Hopefully you can get more information that you're wanting.
Yeah, okay.
That being said, like for your example, where you said, oh yeah, there's an appendix missing. Sent that to Cara and CC'd me. When I respond, I'm going to respond to the whole group. So that assume that if you have that question, other folks have that question. Keeps the information flow open so that we can't discuss during on meeting times, you can still have a nation sharing. Conversation in your head going.
Paul, go ahead.
Oh yeah, excuse me, sorry, I'm in, out of the country, so I'm a couple of seconds behind. So I'm sorry, I kind of talked over you during that period. I think we have like a two second gap. Hey, Isaac, this is to Isaac regarding MIG. Can we get as much information as possible before the meeting so that we can read it and kind of be prepared? And then also maybe MIG gives us a list of things that, like they're asking for, so we could pre-think about it. So we can be as effective as possible at the meeting during the meeting time period?
Absolutely. Now that I know that we're ready to move forward with MIG. I can get ahold of Hugh when he's back next week. He's actually on vacation and out responding to emails. So when he gets back, he and I'll sit down and get with MIG and figure out what their punch list is and get that out.
Hi. Thanks, Paul. I think that's a good idea. I would also like everyone to start sending me thoughts on goals. Do you, Mike and Kim, since you had addressed Grabhorn? Do you have additional questions for Grabhorn that you would like to for sure be addressed next meeting?
I would just like to have somebody give us a review of the reports and have a discussion of what that means. What's it mean moving forward and see maybe if there's something I might want to recommend to the council as far as that report. And so I'd love to spend half hour talking about that. Two, I'd like to have us review the goals that the council set that we're supposed to be following. So that we can be, review those. And then three, we can use, it'd be nice to get just a brief update on. The summer festival that just, how'd that go? What, what worked, what didn't work? And then four, the master plan, those are the four things I would hope to. Discuss.
Okay. I would anticipate, Kim, did you have a thought?
Yeah, and correct me if I'm wrong, Isaac, but I was under the impression that we may be contracting with an engineering plan for some initial concepts.
Those were what were sent out. Were. Initial concepts that are being worked on right now. Those, do you have those copies yet? Do you have anything in that? Or do you only have the Arborist report?
We only have the Arborist report.
So the way that the engineering works is that. When you have contracted, when we get the initial plans back, they are made by architects, not city planners, not city engineers. So they still need to be vetted for our particular land use, development code, engineering standards, public work, design standards. Reason that there's nothing for you yet is we're still reviewing those so that when we do present something, it's in a form that's actually possible to install here. Because sometimes what happens and then bring, they bring in, don't meet our design standards. And just like any other development, we can't waive those just out of convenience. So those are being reviewed to be edited, brought back. So when we have something that's ready for look consumption, i.e. a plan that could actually happen so that everybody has. We present something that everybody knows that that's what's possible and we're not talking about things that can't happen. That's when you'll get that. So we're still waiting as well. And we know there's been delays. I know people are sick of hearing it, but the reality is that like. I mean, the ARBA money that came down. Meaning that all the engineering firms are booked up because every single city across Oregon all has money to spend on these kind of projects. Everybody trying to be first in the door. I mean, the number of firms that actually can do that kind of work being fairly small and really hard to stand up a new firm. And the availability of staffing, things have been delayed. I can tell you they're in the works that have had some review and comment back and forth. Just we don't have a, we don't have designs that could actually be implemented yet. That we're, we are working towards.
Is there a list of, is there kind of the parameters that you gave them in which to work? Like, hey, this is what we're wanting to see on site?
Those, the parameters are exactly what you sent to council and exactly what council sent to us. Those, so I, I can provide that again, happy to, but those are the exact things that we gave them. We said, council directed us to have this and this and this and this and this. So they were the amenities, they were the types of fields or they were that these things are things that we're looking for. We asked them to utilize the space to variety of ways. So we could see different, sort of separate ways that may be figured. To give options.
I think that's the missing piece of information at this point is what, what were those parameters that were given?
I'm happy to send it out. We, we just sent what.
Several information.
The new information.
I, I think we probably need to think about it for an hour meeting.
Yeah, we can, I mean, we can definitely consider that and we probably will for sure for the remainder of the, of the Parks and Master Plan. Okay, so to clarify. Our focus next, next meeting needs to be specifically on MIG. We happen to have any Grabhorn updates. Please start sending me your goals. And then can you send out kind of like, you wanted a refresher on council's goals? Um, okay. Are you, do you mind sending that out?
I will send that out. I will send out. If I can, scope, parameters, as you called them. As soon as I get information from IG, what they are planning and if they have information, I'll send that out as well. Or review and make sure there's nothing else that I have outstanding. I know there's been a couple. I'm specifically from the last meeting as well that I said I would get information back to.
All right. And Jeanette, the main points to communicate to the council is that we are looking forward to beginning the master plan in October and we're going to be reviewing and fine tuning the goals that we've been working on now that we have new information. Anything else that we want to communicate to council? Go ahead, Mike.
I'd really like to have an update on how the event went. How that went for the city and a little bit different version this year was. What didn't? I heard there was 400 people in the run. I didn't hear anything else.
Isaac, go ahead.
So I'm due to give an update to council on October 3rd. So what I can do is when I have that report, I can just put that on.
Perfect. Great. Thank you, Isaac. Okay. Paul.
You're muted, Paul.
Yep.
I said I can give a 30 second run, update on the run if anyone wants to hear it, so it's done. Is that okay?
Go ahead, Paul.
Mike, yeah, the run went really well. We were about 390 people, which is more than last year. The, the, we worked together with Isaac and the event management team. Everything went really, really well. And yeah, the goal is to get over 500 people next year and to really increase the kids' run by three times the amount. Because the kids, I think that's, they just get the most, the biggest pleasure out of it. And we're going to really push hard to get, you know, the 12 and unders next, next year. And we'd love to have, work with the Parks and Rec Committee and the city any, any way we can.
All right. Thank you, Paul. Okay, on that note. I would like to adjourn for the night. Did you have one more comment, Mike?
Paul, I apologize. I didn't make the run. I, I slept in. I didn't get there.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Mike. Okay, everyone, have a very good night.
Night. And, oh, this is Brian. I just want to make sure that I got me, that I was on that meeting. I've been listening, so.